Flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the records reflect the members that are present here this evening. Commissioned members should have received the draft minutes for August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes from August twenty-six as as written.
Second by Bill. Further discussion? There's a favor. Say a aye.
Aye.
Tozne. Carrie, thank you. Delegations and action items. Curaleaf Concept Site Plan Presentation. Darryl, would you like to lead us off on that? And since we got a pretty good, looked like, representation here tonight?
So gentlemen and principals out here, right now we're calling it Curaleaf. I spoke with David B. Kraft Friday, I think it was. I'm waiting for his invoicing. Much like a VAPCO third amended, this site has had previous work done to it, so there'd probably be something amended. So the name may change. Don't let that scare you. So Curaleaf is here to present a concept site plan. They want to do an outside grow. So they have plenty of land there. They're going to explain their their project once they get up to the lectern. Anybody here from the audience who will speak? Please go to the lectern when you're asked and say your name and address. I appreciate that. Any else, sir?
No, I think Representative would like to come start us off here.
Evening all. Chris Albridge, the Operations Manager here in town, so I'm your local guy. The folks with me are a couple of engineers that are working on a project. Then one of our folks from our engineering team in-house is here with us. So a pretty good, pretty big project that we're working on here. Maybe I'll have you guys go and walk through kind of what the process is. But generally speaking, we've got about ten acres out there, and what we're looking to do is do an outdoor grow. That grow would be completely outdoors. There would be no greenhouse or anything like that, just straight outdoor grow. This is going to help us with what we need to do for revenue and bringing back that the size. We don't have a big enough building to continue to keep up with the current market. As you know, in Ju- July of last year, they ended up going recreational. So our indoor, we're one of the smallest grows inside the state, so we're trying to make that expansion and get a little bit larger. We plan on doing beds outside, but they're going to be growing in pots, okay? So looking at additional, probably about five thousand plants outside. No real disturbance to the ground for the most part, except for maybe putting in our tanks. We're going to have two fifteen thousand gallon tanks that we're going to put outside to feed our garden. And there's going to be an additional tank inside that will feed those two tanks, so we can feed that garden. Our season's going to be from April to October timeframe, roughly, depending on what the weather predicts outside. If it's still cold out in April, we won't be growing at all. Just it's going to depend on that that time of the year. We're going to use what we call auto plants at that time, so autos just automatically go into their cycle and start to blossom. Our other ones are called photo periods, so the first half of the season, we're going to grow in that. And then the second half of the season will be our photos. So those will be from seed or from clone, and those will grow about three to four months, same thing, and we'll have two harvests a year. So it's going to be a fair amount of material for for us to pull in. If that makes sense. Am I missing anything? Yeah, very good. Yeah, so the the addition of about twenty headcount for this facility for that time, it's going to be seasonal, so that's the intent. We're looking to put in another thirty parking spaces, paved parking inside of the fence. We're going to have ten-foot fences around the outside of the building. It's going to be fully fenced in, and then with that fencing, it's going to have a privacy barrier around the inside of that to keep that from being obvious of what it is. I mean, most people in town know what we are and what we do. But there's some some things we're trying to mitigate to make it a little less obvious, right? Like, it's tough to do sometimes, though, but that's the intent with that. That'll have all the video surveillance and all that stuff will be outside as well. So within the the regulations of the state, the requirement is to have that twenty-four surveillance on that. So we'll have the twenty-four hour surveillance on it with the fences. I think that's everything that's popping in my mind right now. Any questions from me, gentlemen?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Chris.
Go ahead, Chris.
I've got mine marked down, so you go ahead.
Are these are these raised planters or are these like raised beds like you do in your garden? You know, does this, is there any recycling of the irrigation water? Or what's, how does all that function?
So these aren't aren't raised beds or anything like that. They're, we're going to be growing out of pots. So I think we've got fifteen gallon pots that we're looking to grow in right now. That material will be reused throughout our cycle. The water will go into them. That's going to go straight in through them. Most of that's going to be absorbed through the plants, and then it'll evaporate out. Yeah.
You like in a, like a trough or something that you set the pots in, or are they just going to be sitting on the ground?
Potentially, we're going to have weed barriers on the ground that we're going to make into beds, which is what we're calling beds. We'll have weed barriers down, and then we're going to have, which is, if I remember right, it's four foot and four foot. So a total of eight foot wide. He's going to be about a hundred and twenty feet long. And then we're going to have two plants in a four-foot space, so every four feet, we'll have another plant. And that's just going to be the weed barrier down, and then the pots on top of that.
Irrigate those.
That's going to have above-ground irrigation lines, so we'll have those connected in kind of what you would see like an outdoor farm. Where they're going to have their stuff out there and kind of put that out. We'll have admitters that go into those, so those admitters will go into each one of the plants, and then we'll feed them certain times of day. It's really going to be a pretty manual process where the team's going to go out. They're going to turn on their valves. They're going to let it run for a certain amount of time, and then shut that back off.
This type of facility, is this, I'm assuming it's been used in other parts of the state?
Yeah.
Outside, growing?
For the outdoor grow, yes, sir. There's multiple sites in the state that have them. There's one on the opposite side of the shore. I think Culta is that one. There's one on out by Cumberland. They have an outdoor grow. And they're situated directly in a city, a little bit larger than what we are. But they do the same thing. They're growing outdoors. A lot of them grow directly in the ground, though. There's GTI as well. There's probably about three or four out there inside the state that do the exact type of grow that we're trying to do. There's a number of other ones that have like greenhouses.
Will you harvest them from outside, or will they be moved inside?
So what will happen is we'll go through our season, we'll harvest them. They'll go into either freezers or dryers, then freezers, and then they'll go inside the building to be processed. So most of the material that we're looking to use are going to be processed material. It's not going to be just that raw flower material. It's going to go into extraction. Our laboratory will go through the process of extracting the oil out of the majority of that.
Are you using the whole building now or just the front half?
We're using the entire thing, sir.
Using, pardon me?
The entire thing.
The entire building.
Yeah. Yeah, right now, we're at like fifty-five thousand square foot. Whenever we first moved into the building, it has grassroots back years ago. I think it's about a little over six years now. We started with what they called Phase One, so that first part of the building had six flower rooms in it. Since then, we've added eight additional flower rooms in the rear of the building, so that, I think it's twenty or thirty thousand square foot in the back. That was the add-on. It was just a shell at the time. It's all grow rooms now. So we're, we got a lot of storage inside of hallways with a lot of our stuff, like packaging and things along that nature. Because there's just not enough room inside the building.
Will these growing beds allow you to clear some room inside the building for storage? Or do you look at another future physical expansion of the building itself?
Currently, this is not going to help us with indoor storage at all. That's why there's going to be freezers and things like that that we're going to add to the outside. Then after that, they're going to go out the doors. It's going to be a product flip. Right now, as it stands today, everything we're going to be adding is going to be outside. There's not going to be an addition to the inside this year. Possibility in the future, depending on how this market continues to build out, if it continues to be as as profitable as it is currently and it has that ability to expand, then that's what we'll be looking to do, but that's after we get through a couple of seasons of grow.
I don't see any stormwater management and buyer retention in this. I would assume that there would have to be, considering the amount of additional paved area that you're adding for the parking. I feel I always want to address that, but. And where that might be, just so we have an idea.
Sure. I'm Jeff Furham with BPR LLC. I'm a project manager for this project. So we are going to have to have an initial conversation with Carroll County. Obviously, we're going to have to treat the proposed parking. Likely, we would probably try to accommodate that with an underground stone storage facility. If we have to treat, so the proposed facilities on the, what would be the south side of the building, the trailers for the freezers, the portable freezers, the dressing rooms. So these are all going to be trailered, so they'll be movable. I think some of them are going to stay on-site, or some of them might be moved.
Some are going to be rental.
For rental. Some may go off-site, seasonal. If the county requires us to address that, we think there's potential with the existing stormwater facility, which would be to the east of the building, I believe, to possibly accommodate those, since they're a minor amount of, if they call them impervious, likely, we'd try to address it.
Right. I didn't know if that would count because they would be, because they are relocatable.
Yeah, we're hoping county won't count that, but it's up to their interpretation, you know? They are technically impervious things, so.
But none of the plant area will count, right?
The planting area should not count. The 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 pots that they're using will be typical pots with weeples in the bottom, so anything that's not absorbed will will go straight into the ground.
It's just really the proposed parking areas.
While you're still in the parking area, the new parking area you're putting in, that's to accommodate the new employees?
Yes, that'll be for the.
What's going to happen to all the additional parking that it's over, that you're over-parking now?
Well, that's what this thirty is going to be more than what we have for our current, what we're planning on bringing on headcount. The headcount we're planning on bringing on is only twenty people.
I think they currently, even with the additional staff, I think they currently meet the parking without the thirty additional. They're just doing the thirty additional to alleviate the, am I correct, Darryl?
So Chairman, so they have eighty employees now. They're going to be bringing on twenty seasonal.
You said eighty plus twenty.
Yeah, so and that would be, again, the twenty would be seasonal, like nine months out of the year, whatever. But the requirement is one park space for two employees on the busiest shift. All right, so that's the requirement for industrial.
Yeah, but also in our parking spots, twenty-foot long, they only have down eighteen.
I didn't.
Eighteen is, I thought standard.
Yeah, eighteen foot is a standard.
Twenty is Tawny Town standard.
For car parking, yeah.
You're back, if you, you could park over the spot in that case.
If you're not obstructing a public way, or or the back, or the back of the vehicle doesn't block anything, we can accept an eighteen-foot parking spot where it where it basically like just backs up to to lawn or something.
On April twenty-ninth, you told us Tawny Town standards were twenty-foot long parking.
That is, that is the standard.
Okay, so we're waiving our standards for them?
No.
Another exception, or what?
If if you're, like Jim said, if you're, if you're, if you back your space and it goes over a sidewalk, that's not allowed. But if you're backing up to like grass, then then you're okay to overhang.
Is that written into the code somewhere? Okay. I never delved that deep into it, so I didn't.
It's a lot of fun.
Okay. Take the deep dive. The only other comment I would make, this is a little picky, but just Maryland one forty in that direction is FSK Highway, not Tawny Town Pike. This will be corrected. Somebody at the county may catch that, you know? Any plans for any kind of later on, tenting over these in some way to try to increase your growing season?
That's something that we still haven't completely pulled together, right? So ideally, the the new boss is telling me that we're going to run this season with as as minimal as possible and then reevaluate after we finish this first season. There is a possibility that these go to what we call hoop houses or even greenhouses at some point in time. It just really depends on how well the season goes for us. It's been pretty successful in other parts of the state, and that's why they're really basing off of this model.
If they're growing it in Cumberland.
Yep. Any other thoughts on what your fencing is going to look like? So it's going to be ten-foot high, right?
That's correct.
So is that okay? I mean.
It's going to be private fence, though, right? It's going to have the slats between?
It'll have, it's a wrap. It's like, I don't know what that cloth is that you put around the inside. It's not the slats that go through individually.
You can see through it?
Ideally, you won't be able to see through it. It's.
Okay.
Yeah.
That is the intention. It's like a blind, to try and treat it as a blind.
And I noticed in some areas, you were putting some screening. Are we going to do any buffering around what's in front towards one forty with some shrubbery, some trees, something like that? Or will we wait for, we hear from the county?
Landscaping, the full site plan will become part of the plan.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're covered and you're aware of, we want to buffer this somehow.
So is the, is the ten-foot high fence a special fence for us? I thought six-foot was a.
Well, this is industrial.
So it's different for industrial, okay?
I'm right on that, right?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought, yep.
Yeah. I read the six-foot. I didn't read the ten-foot somewhere, so I'll look for that.
Different section.
I understand, yep. And the other question I had, I saw there was two fifteen hundred, or fifteen thousand gallon tanks. Are you, any thoughts on making sure you have like a fire department hookup to them, just in the event that you need it?
I can tell you that I don't know that, but that's something we can definitely explore. I wasn't, I'm not sure if we had that.
Not that we want you to use it, but if we needed to use it, it would be there.
Right. How are those tanks filmed?
So that's where we have a couple of ideas. So there's a couple of things we're looking at. There's one where we're trying to collect the condensate off of our HVAC systems inside. There's a couple of other recycling ideas that we're looking at for rainwater collection, as well as collecting the water we're using as runoff indoors. And then the other part of this, we're talking about bringing in possible delivery or some more water from the city.
So is, what is the anticipation on water usage?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say we would have to know what your anticipated water draw would be.
Right.
That's a, because that really matters to us here, and unfortunately, we are, we are limited in the amount of water that we can dish out. So that's, that will be an important issue for you to have an answer to.
Absolutely. Now, we we actually discussed this a little while ago about what we think we're going to be on the high side of the peak of the season versus what it will be, and we're going to put a great deal of detail into figuring out exactly what we need. It's going to be really dependent on the size of pot. So if we think we need to use less water with that, we can use a smaller-sized pot, which will cause us to have less watering stored a day, or less less mass to to kind of fill there.
So so right now, there's two, what I see, two fifteen thousand gallon tanks?
That's correct, outside. There's an additional tank going inside the building to kind of feed those two as well.
Okay.
That where the, you do the collection on the inside from the air conditioning units? Is that what goes to that?
It'll be pumped back in, yes. There's, there's a bit of of work that still has to be done with that to get all that tied together.
The idea being you'd collect everything you could collect on the inside. It would go to that tank and then get pumped out to the other tanks as necessary.
It'd have to go through a filtering system before we use it, so. Same thing with the rainwater. This is tough to to put a amount on rainwater, right? That's the tougher part, and even the same thing with the condensate, to understand how much we're going to produce from that alone. But there's definitely some opportunities there, especially with our our RO system right now. We're probably going to go away from the RO system altogether and go to a different system that doesn't use as much, or make as much waste. Right now, it's two gallons to one gallon for our indoor grow. If we go away from that, then we should be able to recoup part of that other gallon.
What's the, what's the lighting going to be at night? I'm concerned about the neighbors around that area.
There's no, there'll be no grow lighting. It's all just natural light.
No grow lighting.
I'm talking about security lighting, security lighting.
There's a whole site planned for that with the with the outside, but there's a couple of poles that are going to be out there that oversee it, and they're all going to have, the exterior's going to have multiple cameras, lights, same thing with the interior.
Yeah, I think Bill's concern, I think, is making sure that everything is directed to minimize light pollution off of the site.
Yeah, the lighting.
Yeah, the the idea would have the night vision cameras. I mean, we have those currently.
Okay, good.
Will you, will you have twenty-four-hour security on-site, like walk-in-the-perimeter kind of thing?
We won't. We will have twenty-four-hour surveillance, surveillance company, which is similar to what we have today.
And that's what every, that's what everybody else has. I'm, I'm thinking you're taking the ideas from Cumberland and the other.
Yes, sir.
What has worked.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's it's very, very similar to what we've already seen in the state. State regulations don't require security at the facility at all. So, you know, the company's taking the eye now, I hear you. Yeah, so that's, that's where the security system come in, and that's where the surveillance comes through a security company.
Thanks.
Jim, if I could ask you a question, back with the original, was there any stipulation with the final approval on the other ones that all growing or planting had to be inside a building? Do you recall any discussion at that point or time?
If there was, it would have been specific to each of the site development plans. So they've already come in with with a couple of different versions with the the build-out that that was mentioned a little while ago was a separate site plan. That was the last thing. It was before the board. So if there was discussion about indoor versus outdoor, it would have been relative to that particular site plan.
Okay.
I think I'd be really interested in what your fencing and shrubbery looks like, you know, when you get further into your plans. With the ten-foot high fence, I don't, I don't really would, I don't want it to look like a prison. So I'm not sure what it's going to look like.
Yeah, but my concern is if it doesn't, it'll look like a, well, you'll be scaling the fence on a regular basis.
Yeah, yeah.
Smart, you'll electrify the thing.
Yeah, maybe.
That is part of the reason why we're trying to back away certain parts of the yard, right? So back by the diamond and back by the football field, we're looking to come across that to where we're backed away from that property line pretty far to try and stay on the high side of that hill, or the way the grade goes will keep us about ten feet above where the ground is.
See, the the dugout didn't stay very far from your line.
No, sir. Yeah, it's like, it's it's right about on it or inside of it, depending on how you look at it. But our our fencing there is backed up off the hill from that point, so it's going to be on the higher side of the hill, which has that grading. So there's about a ten-foot drop from there to that dugout. So I'm trying to keep the fence up on top and then curve it around as it goes towards our our swell that's back there, just to kind of keep it away. There's like a, there's almost a built berm already on that side of the building. It's on a football side. So we're trying to stay up on top of that to keep that as high as we can on on the hill, so it's it's not easy to see it.
Yeah, okay. Is there any odor from the plants as they're growing? I I get a number of, I don't want to say complaints, because that probably isn't the right word, but I get a lot of, I'm informed consistently about how how often it can be smelled through town, and we've got football, you know, athletic fields right there, so.
Yeah.
Can you address that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. There are, there are a number of ways that we do it. Currently, indoors, we have the the scrubbing system. Outdoors, there's actually a different system that uses a eucalyptus mist. So it mists this into the air to try and mitigate that smell.
It's also important to understand that it's not combusted, right? So sometimes the common smells that you may find in communities where it's allowed is the smell of combusted cannabis. This is a flower, right? These are natural terpenes that you smell in the air. They're a little bit different. They're uncommon to this particular microclimate. But where these outdoor grows are in other locations, this is a natural terpene. These are natural flowers. So this is not combusted. These are not combusted smells.
Right.
The ones that mostly are.
Understanding that 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 natural aroma does not release any of the, shall we say, active elements of the of the plant. But most people don't know that, and I certainly didn't until you said that a minute ago. So I think there'd be some educational process involved in this also.
Other questions?
I'm good for now.
Yeah, they definitely do.
Do we have any type of timeframe that you're looking, I mean, is this, we're looking at growing season next year, right?
That's correct. Yeah, ideally, I mean, with the amount of stuff that we're doing on the property, it's it's an aggressive timeline, but I think it's doable, depending on how things go, and making sure that we're prepared for it.
I do have one more question. It's a little bit, not so much a planning commission question, although it is somewhat, but this is, you know, coming from Councilman Tillman. You're bringing in twenty seasonal labor-type people. And then I assume that come November or whatever, you'll be laying them off. There is, it's widely known, and and this is not a Tawny Town thing, this is everywhere. There's shortages of affordable housing. And I don't know what you plan on paying these folks. It's not really my business to know that, but, you know, you have people who are going to be unemployed for four or five months out of the year. It's going to be kind of difficult for them to afford housing here locally. I I don't know, have you given any thought to that in terms of of where your workforce is going to live or come from, or what's going to happen with that?
Absolutely.
I I think just from a, you know, and affordable housing is a big deal with the state right now, and I think that that's, it's something that probably should be addressed.
Absolutely.
Could you come up to the microphone? The folks at home or whatever, and in the recording, they can't hear you from back there, so if it helps.
Yeah, I'm George Chidlofsky. I'm from Curaleaf. I think if I could suggest, just let's be careful with terminology. I know we use the word seasonal, but these are just part-time workers. We're not bringing people in from outside that might be categorized as, you know, immigrants, or I don't want to say those horrible things, but these are, these are just part-time workers. They're fully W-two'd. These are, these are fully paid, above-board staff.
That that wasn't, that wasn't the, that wasn't the.
No, there's just some.
No, and I, and I didn't mean to imply that at all.
Right, right.
But, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, you've got, you know, companies around here have a hard enough time trying to find help as it is. So, you know, if you're, you're talking about seasonal help, you know, where are they going to come from? Where are they going to stay while they're here, because they're obviously not going to be permanent? So that's just something that probably needs to be addressed.
Point taken, for sure.
There are a part of that twenty, we do intend on being permanent staff as well. So there's going to be a core team that's going to be responsible for the running of the outside, so we're going to bring in another supervisor, several leads that are all going to be a part of our full-time staff. And then once the season's over, they're going to come inside and help with the indoor until it's time to start planning the outdoor again. But I'm not sure the exact number of what that's going to be of that percent.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone from the floor that would have some questions or comments? If you do, please come forward and state your name.
I'm Bernie Knox, a neighbor. I can't hear well, so a lot of what you said I don't understand. But my main question is about the odor that you brought up of a skunk. Is that going to increase or decrease?
I would, I don't want to speak for you, Chris, so why don't you?
Go ahead and use that.
So exactly, the the same thing I was talking about a little bit earlier is that we do have a mitigation process to spray in mist oil. It's going to help mask that smell, but there is the potential for it to be louder, at least to start with, until we get that process.
We smell it sometimes very bad. What what's going on then?
It's indoors, so a lot of that stuff is usually whenever we're doing like a harvest. The smell can travel a little more as it gets to be weather like we have outside where it's a little moist. The air has fog in it. Typically, you'll smell that a little bit more then. We do have scrubbers inside the building to try and mitigate that that smell.
It's not going to increase.
And say it's not going to increase, but there is a different mitigation process that we're going to be looking at to keep that from getting worse than what it is. And right now, we're not spraying the eucalyptus oil. It's just a filtering system inside. So when we go outside, it'll be an actual eucalyptus or oil that'll be misted throughout the day.
Part of the reason I asked, several years ago, they built a chicken house in Keemar. And the town was upset because they didn't get a pass. Part of the reason I asked, several years ago, they built a chicken house in Key Mar, and the town was upset because they didn't get a pass, approve it with the town. Sometimes, the odor's coming from there, I would prefer the chicken house.
Spend a lot of time on each of your.
Thank you, Mr. Knox. Does anyone else would like to speak? This is just a presentation, this will be coming before us a few more times, so.
There's no, uh.
Welcome, any comments?
Is there any, uh, do, do we, are we approving or?
No, there's no approval, this is just a presentation.
Okay.
Just to inform us of what, what's on the agenda for coming up, or may, or may not. But that's, that's all in seeming.
It still has to be approved through the state as well. So without, uh, approval from you, we won't get approval from the state. They're waiting for an admissible approval. So if that doesn't happen anytime soon, this project doesn't happen.
At what level? I mean, are they, do we need to have the final plans approved, or?
No, they just wanna know that you're open to us doing this project. So if you do that, then we can move forward with that process as far as approval goes. Uh, as for whether it happens or not, again, that's still up to you.
So basically, just like, it's the first time it went through?
Yeah, I would say it's very similar to the, the very, very beginning, whenever the building opened as what it is today. But we'll still maintain what we have today, but in order for us to go outdoors and have this concept approved, it has to go through your approval first. Uh, once you give approval, if you give approval, then we can submit that to the state. So we've already submitted to the state, but they're waiting for that part of it.
All right, I'm looking for any more questions, if not, we thank you very much.
Yep, appreciate it. Thank you, thank you all for your time.
And good luck with your venture. Moving on. Wanna go on with your, uh, your report?
Sure.
Your folks are welcome to leave or stay, whichever.
Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nobody stand.
Can we have someone left?
You're the winner.
You get the door prize.
All right, uh, moving on. Darryl, your, uh, report?
Sure. So, um, I have a new public service announcement, um, the financials, uh, disclosure. I appreciate all the head and then, um, the goal was to get these in the clear as quickly as possible. Because every quarter it's, drags on and drags on and drags on, and she has other things to do. So, um, on, so I'm not gonna read each one of these things each, each month, I mean, you guys, you, you guys do very well at reading, especially, especially Brad. He's, he's quite the reader, I'll tell you that. But so, but things like Chairman Parker, City Manager, Wirebreaker, myself, and Principal from AVAPCO, they had a little bit of a challenge. The new, no, the owner, um, of AVAPCO, they purchased a new line of equipment, and they wanted to put it in their worldwide headquarters. To do that, they, they had to, to, they had to go away from the green roof. And, and just modify all the mechanicals, I can't imagine how, what that's gotta be. But the good thing here is that, in doing so, they're gonna correct a lot of stormwater management on the other side of the property. That, that has been a little bit of a scenario coming down on the Frederick, um, side.
Cross Mill route, the Cross Mill side?
Yeah, exactly. So, now, what we're gonna do, so red lines can happen, um, um, you know, they're not changing a major part of the footprint or the, um, scope of the job in these scenarios, but, um, the city is requiring, um, CDM Smith to approve those red line changes with respect to stormwater management. So we're all covered that way.
So, was the green roof part of their original stormwater management bio-retention?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, if they have to, it, now, are they, do they, are they taking out temporarily, because they have to take out roof to set the thing in there? Or, uh, is, are they permanently removing that section of green roof and just gonna be regular roof, or what's the?
So what, what is not now a green roof on, on the rest of the building, is not gonna be a green roof on, on the addition part of it now?
So the, so the addition was the only part that was gonna have a green roof?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I didn't know if there was green roof on the rest of it.
Yeah.
Um, so the new additions that they're currently building now will not have a green roof.
Yeah, conventional roof, right.
But instead, whether it's gonna be some other sort of, uh, stormwater quality?
They will, they will treat a part of the site impervious that was not previously treated per the plan, so basically they're swapping.
Right.
What was the green roof, and they're gonna treat a different area in lieu of that to make up for the lack of treatment that the green roof would have provided.
Okay.
So TIS, you're gonna see that, um, traffic impact studies, there's a couple of those going on. One for the Hupton area property, which we'll discuss a little bit later on, when it comes to, um, uh, that drawings I sent to you guys for, um.
Is that the one you have listed as the Tawny Town project?
The Key Crossing.
Key Crossing.
Yeah.
So that's different from the one from the Tawny Town project from, uh, Sherry Thompson?
No, that's.
That's, that's the same.
Yeah.
Is that one of the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're talking about that a little bit later, if you, if you like.
Okay, I just, okay.
Um, so a lot of work going on there. Jim's been working very hard with the county in trying to get recharge. So one of the next things that we need to worry about is, is water. Okay, and one of those aspects is the water recharge, and what we can get, um, from, from the county is they've been nice enough to offer us, um, some of that water recharge. And, um, that's all I have on that, Jim, if you wanted to expand on that at all?
Um, the, the county secures recharge easements with their county ag preservation easements that they put on properties. They have properties within our aquifer areas. And I did find out today, actually, that, um, it's something the county administrator is able to, um, sign an MOU with the city to dedicate that recharge to us. So now, the, um, I guess the concept is now solid, that they're going to donate it to us.
Nice.
Now we need to work through the whole thing with the Department of the Environment. But at least now we have the assurance that it's going to happen, it's not a political decision. The county administrator's on board and can make that happen. Now we just need to work through all the technical stuff with the Department of the Environment. They have enough to basically offset what the state says is currently a deficit of recharge. But we're still going to need to go out and procure additional acreage or recharge easements on properties within the aquifers in order to enable additional development.
So this doesn't, this won't, this won't, uh, increase our, what we can allocate at this point in time? It just gets us out of Dutch with the state?
The state basically says we're already pumping more than the ground can recharge. Because we're only allowed to count what's under our control for recharge. So the county can help us out and kind of make us whole, so that the next increase we ask for, we're starting from kind of a, a zero rather than a negative.
I, I just wonder, you know, it, it seems like a no-brainer, because why would the county need recharge areas? Because they don't have.
Right.
You know, water system, especially up in this, up this way, you know, it's different down around, you know, Eldersburg and the Freedom District, but it's a, you know, a different ballgame up here.
Well, the county doesn't have the growth up here like we have in, in, within the town limits.
Right.
So.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, there's no.
They should be willing to give up some of that.
So it's, right, so it, it certainly is kind of a, um, you know, they've expended funds to put these properties in ag preservation. So, you know, I think that we're very fortunate that they are willing to donate it, because it did cost them, you know, some money to, to procure that.
And that, that area that they're willing to donate is in the, is gonna be, or is part of the aquifer?
Is within, right, within our Piney Creek and Pipe Creek aquifers.
Okay.
So years, several year, well, many now, years ago, um, the county did do this, it was all different players at that point in time. But the county, um, had property on, uh, Bark Hill Road, uh, near FSK that they acquired, and they dedicated the recharge from that property to the city. And at the time, that allowed us to apply for an increased allocation permit for wells fifteen and sixteen that are the two wells in Carol Vista. So we've, we've gone through the process once before, about, gosh, ten or twelve years ago. But we have everybody who was part of that, um, other than the city attorney, um, that, you know, is, is gone. You know, they've moved on to different positions or, um, so we're kinda starting from scratch as far as the technical end of how to make it happen.
So these are, these are properties that are already in ag pres, so there isn't gonna be, there, there would never be any development on them to start with.
Correct.
If there are parcels out there that could be added to our recharge area, but that are not in ag pres and could be subject to development, if those are developed privately on individual wells for individual houses, does that take away their ability to, um, be added to our aquifer recharge?
It, it would affect how much recharge could be credited to a property. So what we're, I suppose having conversations with, um, some property owners about is, you know, we, basically, this is all essentially transferring development rights. You know, that, that, or, well, waiving development rights for, you know, revenue for payment. So, you know, if you go into ag preservation, you still may be able to do, may be able to do off-conveyances for the farm if it's entitled to any. So that you can, you know, have a, a house site for your children or things like that. So most of the easements will, will allow that, or, you know, exclude certain areas to, to preserve that capability. And if we do a water recharge easement, we would probably recognize also if a property had the off-conveyance ability, that we would want to make sure that the, you know, that ability remains with the property. So, we will probably end up requesting a percentage or a portion of the recharge that the hydrogeologists will say that property has. It may be seventy-five to eighty percent, something like that, of the recharge. And if we're talking about a, you know, a fifty-acre farm, that farm might have a couple of off-conveyances that they're able to do. So if we only take seventy-five or eighty percent of the recharge, they'll still be able to put a house on, you know, those lots that they can carve off. So a lot of, a lot of moving parts with it. But again, you know, thanks to the county, it looks like we'll at least be able to start from, from a zero instead of a negative as far as that recharge goes.
What's the timeline on that, Jim? Cause we have, we have a lot of.
Lot of things in the pipeline right now.
We have a lot of things that we have to decide and, and for this, for this future of this town. In, in water, sewer. We're playing ga, not playing games, I shouldn't say that, we're playing with numbers.
Yes.
And we have a lot going on here. And there's a lot of moving this way with us. And we still don't know that answer, if we're gonna be able to support it. And there's a lot of people in this town are scratching their head on the same thing. I'll talk to a lot of people, what are we doing with traffic, what are we doing with water, what are we doing with sewer? I'm just putting it on record.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, lot of things that have to be done, cause we have how many different developments out there?
Yeah. So, right, so we need to work our way through, um, you know, it, it really is a lot of numbers. You know, it's not only what the state will approve in terms of, you know, a particular property with what they're willing to count for the recharge, but if they will link that to a particular well that we already have. You know, it's possible that we may end up needing to develop an additional well. I, I hope that we don't, but we also don't want to, you know, as the saying goes, put all our eggs in one basket, or in this case, a few baskets. So, you know, we have wells that can pump more, but some of them have an adverse effect on nearby properties when we pump them more. So those are gonna be off the table. So we have a lot of numbers to figure out there, but then we also have numbers to figure out as far as whatever we pay to acquire recharge acreage or recharge easement, we're going to pass on to builders or developers to recover that investment. So we're going to be increasing our water impact fees or our water benefit assessments. So what will the market bear to do that?
Well, we have to make sure, not to cut you off, we have to make sure if the hypothetical of the new, new tower, water tower, you know, we don't know that at, at this point. Who's gonna, who's gonna take that hit, you know? The city, the people that live already here shouldn't take that hit. You know, if people want to invest into our town, as you just said, impact fees or whatever.
Right, and so they, if, if a developer, you know, and, and, you know, we can just lay this on the table, it's Mountain Brook Farms, would have to bring their own. Or we would have to try to acquire that for them and then get it back from them in, in benefit assessments.
So two city managers ago, the view was that the developer should take all the risk and find the water source, develop the water source, deliver the water source to the city. That was the intent with Meads Crossing. That did not play out very well, uh, for the city, and the city manager subsequent to, to the one who was, uh, in the office when Meads Crossing started, um, the pendulum swung the other way, and they looked at it as the city is an infinite entity. We will be here, you know, hundreds of years from now, somebody will. So we can afford to find the water, develop the water, make it available, and then sell it when the demand arises, sell it to the developer and recover our cost at that point. So we went from putting all the risk and upfront expense on the developer to the city doing the upfront expense and then charging it back to the developer. So.
Like, the experience of Meads Crossing.
Different, different benefits and, 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 um. Downsides to it. Putting the developer in charge of it, well, takes us out of the driver's seat. And some of the issues that we had with Meads Crossing, for example, was our code says you need to produce a well or to provide a well that delivers so many gallons per minute. Well, Meads Crossing didn't need that much. So they drilled a well, that well could provide enough water when it was pu, um, test pumped to provide what they needed for that project. So they came back to the city and said, if I drill this farther to get your two hundred and fifty gallons per minute, or whatever it may have been, and I hit some contamination, who's gonna pay for all that investment in that well wasted? And it just kinda started the spiral from there, and it was like, okay, well, you don't have to drill it any farther, we don't need you to give us a well that gives us two hundred and fifty gallons a minute, so.
But then you were, then they were in the wrong aquifer, anywhere drawing down on people's wells the other way. So, that's what happens when we, you know, uh, relax our, our requirements. Our requirements are in there for a purpose, and I, you know, I think that, uh.
So we have been, um, you know, for the last, I'll say, ten years or so, you know, the pendulum swung to the other way, and that's where it is now, that the city intends to develop the water sources and then recover our expenses as the properties develop. So that's, that's the model that we've been following for, you know, the last ten years or so, maybe longer. So there is some upfront risk to it, but I guess the idea is that, you know, that development is, now unless our comprehensive plan update presents a much different picture than our current one, you know, when that, when the numbers work, that development will come and the city will, will then recover its, its investment, so. But it's, it's a lot, a lot of moving parts.
Kind of hoping that there was some kind of middle ground in there that we could, you know, work cooperatively with the, um, you know, with the developers so that they didn't feel like they were being taken for a ride by the city. And by the same joke, we can't put it all to them, because we have, our experience has obviously shown that we. obviously shown that we've been taken for a ride by the developers. So, you know, we, I'm not sure what the mechanics of that would look like, but I think that we have to have some kind of way to hybrid that system to where there is some risk sharing and, and responsibility.
And I think that it's, it's most likely that we're going to see things, see the recharge piece come into place in a way that will enable development in phases. I don't think that it's likely we're going to procure enough recharge in one shot to build four hundred houses. But what we're hoping is that we can, you know, secure enough so that as, for example, Mountain Brook Farms moves through the process, that we will have enough water available for them to build, to commit to the first phase. And then while that's ongoing, we'll continue the search for recharge and lining that up so that when they're ready for phase two, we'll be ready. But, you know, in, in a way, we're competing with ag preservation as well. So, you know, we, we have some, some ideas there, you know, but we're looking to try to, you know, procure as much easement at the least cost we can, the least amount of money we can spend to get it there.
But again, there's a, there's a potential there for a cooperative way to work with the county, you know, where, what are they studying? What are they looking at? And can we just write, can we write that in at the beginning instead of having to come back and do it later?
The, the dialogue is ongoing, so...
All right. That's... Sorry, I didn't mean to...
Okay. So, all right, how about a nice fun story? Mike Brain with Mountain Brook. I had asked him, or, we had talked, and he, we had said that, he had told Jim and I that he got a call from CLSI whenever, he getting ready to submit the prints for Mountain Brook. He got a phone call from CLSI and said, hey, I need names for these streets. He says, how much time do I have? He goes, I have half an hour. So, he Googled mountains. And so, anyway, long story short, that's how some of the names got. But I say, I'd say this, they were very mature about our asks and queries, so, I also shared that with Carroll County. So, they're aware of that, so I'll further up, follow the conversation with the county on our names, the requests that you guys had. So, they were, so Mountain Brook was pretty cool about it and so was the county. So, we're seeing what comes out of that.
So, hopefully eliminate the road and put streets where roads were, right?
Well, we're seeing, I mean...
That's what we're looking.
They've heard our suggestions, so we've, we've done that part. So, met with the county commercial inspector, and long story short, they've, they've eased up on some of the things that, that they were asking for, for the Tony Town Police Department shed, you know, the ramp and all that. I mean, the manufacturer of that shed, I said, hey, is there, you have a price for an option for ramps? He says, we build sheds. So, so it got to be more fun like that, so...
Exactly.
So, the county worked very nicely with us, so that's good to go. Two zoning board of appeals cases were heard. Both cases were granted the variances that they were asking for. Kenny's, anybody notice any landscaping happened up there at Kenny's?
Haven't been by, so I can't...
So, years ago, when Kenny's came in, one row of smaller plants were not put in. And then some of the others died, large cypresses, I think they're lelands. Some of those died, as they, they do. But these landscaping plans, they're, they're forever. You know, those buffers will be maintained. The county was on that and just less than a few minute phone call. And so, those are planted. I haven't checked out the senior center yet, but that's going to be re-landscaped.
Okay.
All right. So, good job for the team working with us at the county. So, there's a lead, there's a lead and copper water supply line scenario that's going on right now, per MDE, there has to be some accounting of what the water lines are made of going into people's homes. So, there's a grant gotten or will be hopefully soon awarded. I think, has it been awarded, Jim, for, or is it just, we're waiting for the timeline?
We're, we're waiting.
Okay. So, long story short, Arrow, the engineers that are helping with this project, as well as the comp plan, a plan came up with the utilities department to put all of our prints on, download them electronically. So, in my office, for those of you who have been in there, you know, I've got racks and racks and racks of prints. They're heavy, they get clumsy. Every once in a while, you hang one up and five minutes later, you hear this horrible noise that no person wants to hear. That's a rack of prints of...
Falling off the air.
Oh, yeah, it's horrible. So, that's something you do the next day. But in any case, but all that, they're, they're painstakingly scanning in, they're sending us electronic copies, so that, you know, that'd be a great way to share things. Yeah, because like Tonny, Tonny View, you know, there's a little bit of finding out where the water and sewer is. We know where the water and sewer is, but where do you want to get it from? What's the cheapest way? And a builder has a different stand on it than someone that lives across the street who doesn't want it coming off that side. Anyway, so that's, that's the value in that. For all those that signed up for the MPCA, we are signed up. I delivered the, the different sets of, or a set of classes that they're going to be having. It's pretty exciting compared to, I mean, last year, I mean, so I, I don't, there's no times yet, so, we're just, we're just, you know, we'll find out, you know, I, I don't plan to go on Sunday, because my Redskins are making a run for the Super Bowl, but anyway. So, anyway, so, yeah, I'll be anxious to see the schedule as it comes out. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Daryl?
Excuse me.
Not? We have anything from Jay?
No.
Okay. County update?
She, she's not able to make this meeting.
Okay. Let's move into old business then. I guess we're talking about our comp plan. So, I, evidently, I don't know how many of you guys made it to the oil fest down here, the...
Harvest Fest?
Harvest Fest.
I did not.
But I was down early when it was raining and they had a turnout. It was late, but I understand later on during the day, it picked up quite a bit. So, we had a few people stop by when I was there. So, the word is getting out, I guess gradually, but...
Yeah, I've, I've seen it on Facebook and it, there's a big splash page that comes up when the, when you open the city website. I assume that also happens on the Tonny Town Connect. So, I haven't looked at that yet. So, yeah, and I've actually had people ask me questions about it. You know, what's this for? What, what's, where's the information going? What do they do with it? So...
We've got to keep pushing it.
Yes.
There's a, there's a lot of people that I assumed that knew about it. They had no clue. And once I kind of explained, wow, yeah, I'd like to put, put some input in.
So, I've gotten, got a lot of, I'm going to put a bunch of cards at the barber shop next door to me, because those are great places for information.
Well, there's a lot of citizens not even aware of a comp plan.
No.
So, do things, spare a moment.
So, it's, it's, it's going to be hard to go on Facebook and not, not see this.
Right.
So, it overly drives someone to, you know, a couple sentences, what, what is this comp plan thing? So, Dan's got this all over the place. So, appreciate that very much. And that's what it's going to take, is, you know, we, we all know people. You know, it's, it's, it's what people, it's what people do. They just, you know, oh, what, what?
So, do we need to, to do any approval for our meetings we had just had last week?
No, sir.
On the minute or anything?
We'll, we'll do that next...
At their next meeting in November.
We're good. All right. New business discussion on Key Crossing Road? Daryl, that's back in your lap.
Yeah, so during the traffic impact study for the Hoffman Farm, we're sort of looking at that, all the roads around that, and, you know, Sales Mill and Stump Town and so and so forth. And I, I remember seeing this before, but on the drawing, you see there by all of Tonny Town Road going over to one forty?
That's actually, I actually went back to the 2010 comprehensive plan and, and this road actually is in it. I was kind of surprised, because I, and I am...
Correct me if I'm wrong, area that's going across Route 140, wasn't that going to be a circle? At one time, there was, at one time, there was some...
Overpass, wouldn't it go be an overpass or something like that?
Well, I would think it probably would have had to have been an overpass, because my understanding from the research that I recently did on this, that that's a limited access highway. And it's that way for a reason. So, it would either have to be an overpass or, or something. But I can't imagine, given the volumes at the circle and where this crossing would be, that the state would allow an intersection at that point.
I, I recall it being overpass going across to the Huff, Hoffman property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is obviously well before my time.
That was thirty or forty years ago, yeah.
But it's probably part of the, you know, again, part of the original bypass discussions and stuff like that, but, you know, I, I can't see the state allowing that connection of this road at one forty at that location. I just, I don't know that they would do that.
I don't understand what all the numbers are.
All the what, sir?
All the different numbers in the different developments.
Oh, they're the...
Because it's definitely not houses, right?
I believe it is.
Probably the plot.
Yeah.
The plot number.
The plot number? Because when we got up to like a hundred and ninety-two or a hundred and thirty-two all those, I didn't think it was that many plots in it.
Well, like five, you see five twenty there by the orange line, but that's, the shops that is five twenty, Spalmer Street.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty accurate.
Okay. So, our discussion about it?
Yes, yes, I guess, yeah, what do, what do we want, are we going to decide something here? So, one of the questions I had was exactly what you were talking about. What does it look like where we cross one forty, so?
For reference, that's right by the pump station and the Baptist Church, I think.
Right next to the Baptist Church.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, it's on the other side of Baptist Church, you're right.
Yeah, I know where there's...
Pumping stations.
So, what is, what are we referring to or what, what is our concern here tonight?
So, I mean, I guess basically, do, do we, do we want it?
Well, so, we've, in conversations with the, with the potential developer of the property, we've pointed out this key crossing road is what it's called in the comprehensive plan. And we've asked them to incorporate this, you know, connection out to Route 140 in, in their concept. There have been, because as Chris pointed out, one forty is a restricted access point road east of, actually, I think it includes the roundabout and east of the roundabout.
That's part of the access, part of the access.
That state highway representatives so far are saying, well, we're not likely going to entertain a connection there. And I've pointed out that, well, state highway was among many state agencies that reviewed our comprehensive plan, and yet, here it is. So, we don't want to just throw in the towel and say that's not going to happen, because we're looking, you know, at ways that traffic on that northern portion of the city can, you know, enter and exit town without getting on the already congested East Baltimore Street. So, we didn't want to just give up on the idea.
Well, what's...
So, that's, so part of what we wanted to talk about tonight is, you know, does, does this connection get us something? Do we need it to go all the way over to Old Tonny Town? Does that really get us anything? And if we don't, if we can't get access onto one forty with this key crossing road, what are some options that, that you might entertain for it? And there is also, on the image that, that Daryl circulated, there's also, this is not on the comprehensive plan map, but it is embedded in the traffic, the circulation map. There is a realignment of Sales Mill Road that would take it from where it intersects with Route 140 now to a point more or less opposite the shopping center entrance. And that is...
Makes more, a ton more sense.
So, that's, right, so that's one of the orange lines on there. So, these are all things that are kind of in flux that we are going to need to nail down if the Hoffman property does move forward in the, the development process.
Yeah, I think the, taking out the, that crazy corner on Stump Town certainly makes sense.
It does make sense.
And, and relocating the access point for Sales Mill to Baltimore Street to be opposite the shopping center entrance makes a ton of sense. So, those things are, are, to me, no brainers in, in this kind of an exercise. I guess a couple of things that come to mind with the key crossing road, you know, the question is, what does it buy us? And if it's not going to connect, if, 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 if the state would let us connect to one forty, it, it still doesn't buy us a whole lot, because what that does buy us is a whole lot of traffic coming down Roberts Mill and, and to Sales Mill and, you know, bypassing East Baltimore Street, which isn't necessarily a bad thing unless you live in that little stretch of very narrow Sales Mill Road. You know, so I'm not sure. If we had long ago thought about this connection and continuing it up around like the backside of Meadow Brook, between Meadow Brook and Meads Crossing, to where that could have been a portion of bypass, but unfortunately, we didn't think that far ahead, that would make, that would make sense if we could attach to one forty there. And that might may even make sense, that might even have made sense to state highway, you know what I mean, to, to change their plans to allow something like that. But I, I don't know who is serviced by that other than a very small group, you know, or, or then we create a traffic problem somewhere else in the city because we've, you know, you get enough people complaining about speeding down Roberts Mill Road as it is.
Yes, so, I don't, I, I agree with some of the stuff that Chris says here, but I guess the, is, are there plans to like widen Stump Town Road ever? I mean, so to me, before I tell you whether I think they're good ideas or not, I want to know what the development is going to be in that area. Like, I mean, is it going to be one of these community villages things, or what is it going to be? I think the lower half is commercial and the upper half is, is development.
Stump Town Road, is that county?
So, we maintain it for most, most of the length along the Hoffman property.
But didn't we have a developer a few back that wanted to develop part of that site? And there was an issue with widening Stump Town Road?
So, so years ago, the property the city now owns that used to be the shop property had a concept development plan, and the commission at the time said that they wanted that ninety-degree turn on Stump Town to be eliminated before the shop property could develop. The developer, I think, did not have much success in negotiating with other property owners to try to address that curve. Or it may have been too big of an off-site improvement for the numbers to work for the project. I don't really know the details, but the shop property project kind of fell by the wayside.
Okay.
So, right, so that, straightening out that curve on Stump Town has been a, a goal of the planning commission tied to the development of, of this part of the city.
Ten or fifteen, ten or fifteen years ago.
So, that, so that area, basically, Stump Town is, has been widened along the, the frontage for Creekside, but then it tapers back rapidly. So, so basically, this development, I'm sure we would see Stump Town being widened from the Creekside width, you know, through the improved area, through that orange line at least. And I guess it would also depend upon if, if there were houses fronting Stump Town Road and things like that, you know, that we would probably have them improve it for the, the length of the property. So, much like, very much like, like Stump Town Road is now, where, where... So much like, very much like, like Stump Town Road is now, where, where you get a little bit past Keenan Street, it pinches down, right?
It does.
It was widened everywhere there was development. Where the development stops, it pinches back down with the old width. When you get to the new development, Creekside, it widens out again. And then, you know, when you get past that, it pinches down.
Right, so you've got that little stretch between Keenan and Creekside where...
Right.
So that's hit light on your question.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, so my opinion is, like you say, slightly different from Chris's. So it's not, in my opinion, if you don't open it up from the pond out to there all the way, all, all sections of the road, there's, there's no sense in cutting the corner out.
Right. No, that's true.
Yeah, that's like the bridge of Roberts Mill Road. You get bottlenecked in.
So, and, and then the, uh, the red and white road, the, uh, cross, uh, cross whatever, key crossing road. If it doesn't access 140 there, I don't see the point in that either.
And that's the same way, what's the advantage, you're going from 140 over to the old Tawney Town Road?
Yeah, I just, I don't see it.
Because that, that misses our Antrim bypass altogether.
Yeah, but I do agree with Chris on straightening it out there.
Yo, Lutz, nice to know I got you on my side there. Well, one other thing that, that just occurred to me as I'm sitting here looking at it, you know, where that's, uh, uh, that orange line is there, uh, to, to move the entrance, uh, you move Sales Mill over to be square off with the entrance, um, is, I don't know if you can tell me this without giving anything away, but is the, is the development there at the Hoffman property going to include the Tevis property?
No.
Okay, so that would be something, because just a, a something that makes sense looking at this, um, is if you continued that orange line over to Break Iron, that would certainly get rid of that mess.
But that would bring everything out of a bad spot then, Break Iron. We, I don't think you really want more traffic on Break, Break Iron.
Well, I don't think you'd bring any more traffic on Break Iron. I think what you'd get is you would have the folks at Creekside who wanted to get to Baltimore Street would turn left instead of right.
Yeah.
And, and cut over to tie it to the new entrance by the shopping center.
Right.
Just, I, just a thought, because I just, it, you know, when you sit here and look at it, like, wow, why doesn't we just finish that?
So I, I think, um, Dan might have observed that the, this property is a split between residential and commercial, so that the, I'll say, the third of the property closest to the roundabout is general business, and the, the rear side closer to Stump Town Road is our 10,000. The sketch plans that, that have been shared follow that, you know, zoning split and appropriate development with a, a standard R10,000, you know, single-family house, um, residential community on the back part, and then commercial development on the front part. Um, they are proposing an access point opposite the shopping center driveway and consideration of a signalized intersection there, uh, which of course would be all through a traffic study and everything and state highway and all that, of course, so no guarantees by any means there. Um, but they recognize that that may need to be a signalized intersection. Um, but they're proposing bringing the commercial access point out there, but they want to have additional means of ingress egress to this, you know, 100-plus acre site. Um, and we've talked about a number of things, such as, you know, could the roundabout be reconfigured so that Sales Mill Road is a fifth leg on the roundabout? Um, and state highway wasn't particularly receptive to that idea either.
The geometry doesn't work.
So, um, so there's all kinds of circulation-related challenges with this property. Um, and at this point, I believe the traffic study is supposed to evaluate, um, if these connections were made, um, both the relocation of Sales Mill Road and if the key crossing road were able to be built and connected to 140. So we're kind of waiting to see how those conversations play out and if the developer does move forward with the study to do those things. Um, but I guess, in talking with, with the zoning administrator, with Daryl, we were kind of questioning, even if we do get to connect key crossing to 140, does its continuation over to Old Tawney Town do, do anything for us?
I'm sorry.
Is there, is there benefit to keeping that?
Yeah, well, like I said, I, I don't know that there's any benefit to the key crossing road connecting to 140 directly if, unless you're going to go ahead and widen Stump Town all the way back up to Keenan, uh, and make that, you know, and then it becomes a real issue then for the people who live in that part of town, because now we've created a whole new traffic flow, um, that, uh, you could say they didn't sign up for. Um, I, I, you know, um, the other thing, and it's not on here and not real obvious where it is, and I, I kind of think it's probably somewhere to the left of the line for key crossing, but there's a, um, power line right away through there. Um, the existing power lines that go through there. And one, the only question I have, if, if, if we thought that the key crossing was of some value to us, could we in some manner attach a dedication of, of an easement or whatever through there that parallels that power line? Um, because that, that's more or less useless to the developer anyway. So maybe that there's something that could be gained by, if, if we think that key crossing road is something we want, do we tie that to that power line easement?
So other than discussion, what are we saying tonight?
Well, I just think it's a discussion to me. So, um, city manager and I did not say, okay, yeah, you know, we're going to, you know, lop this off, whatever. We, we knew we had, we had to talk to you all. Just wanted to sort of get a, get a feel. I mean, I, I look at, um, this road over here really as something that that developer must worry about. The blue that's on there for that, um, for that area, it's, that's a water-related or a wetland type area. It's not a water crossing, so it's not as scary as it looks on, on the ear.
But that part of that road, Daryl, from Tawney, from Route 140 over to Old Tawney Town, where that wetlands there, it just increases the cost.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, plus, I mean, my, my first thought was, if, if you're coming out to 140 from that road, cars are already going 50, 60 miles an hour.
Right.
Yeah, um...
Much reduced to just go to the circle.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't think that's a benefit to...
I think the only point of the key crossing road was if that was supposed to bridge over 140, and that's why the section goes down to Old Baltimore Pike, uh, or Old Tawney Town Pike, rather.
And if there was a, if you exited from here to there...
Say it again?
Came out of, Carol Wiston went there.
Or, yeah, or it may, that's something that may, would maybe use for a development here.
But when we get to the master plan, working on that, I think...
Yeah.
Need to make some decisions, but, like I said, I'm almost certain we talked about an overpass going into 140s.
This part.
And that was, that was if you were going eastbound. It might not have been more than 10 years ago. I can't remember very far back.
I don't know, this, this is in, in the 2010 comp plan. It does exist.
Talk about it back there.
Yeah, I actually, I, I downloaded that today.
So they're just 14 years old anyway.
That's right.
All right, did that cover what you wanted to talk about for CD?
So I'm, I'm hearing no great love for key crossing road, really.
No great, what was that again?
No great love for key crossing road.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it makes any sense right now.
Not on the southwest side.
Yeah, and, and like I said, the only reason to extend it across all the way to, to Old Tawney Town Road was if you had to go fly over 140. Um, if you don't have to fly over 140, that road serves no purpose at all.
Really terrible over here. You don't have to down here, we come up there, we're like...
I still think there's too much traffic here, but I don't do that. All right.
So...
Okay.
We'll hold those thoughts.
All right, yeah, I mean, it's...
For future discussions on it.
Yeah, I, you know, when, if somebody comes back with something more concrete, but I, you know, you've got your, you've, you've heard the concerns of the group here, so... Okay, good.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Tawney Town Supply.
Yes.
People ask about it.
I get, I get that question all the time.
Supply.
Tawney Town Supply. The hardware, when we go to see the hardware store?
Yeah.
The hardware store.
It's still working through.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so, none of the projects that are, so, just a second on the agenda, um, chairman, if you don't mind.
Okay.
All right, so you guys are probably thinking on Fivend about the whole Sheets thing. You know, this old guy's not making it up. So I was proactively sent an email after the last three years for them to sign a, um, PWA for the sole order, um, um, assets at Sheets. Running high, running high, running high. And then I did call them, and they say, hey, Daryl, what's up? It's Brian, how's it going? So anyway, they're trying to, they're, they're just a, this is a huge, fast-growing machine. And he explained to me a year and a half ago, his job is to get his sheets ready to bop out of the ground, he's off to something else. The assured deal on that's $300-some thousand dollars is still being held entirely, um, and I can't imagine us seeing these sheets in that purview. But anyway, so the letter a month or so issue ago, um, because in my office sometimes it seems like Groundhog Day, um, the, um, the movie, the, um, their, their legal, Sheets' legal team has had it in their office for a couple of weeks now. So I'm hoping really one day is just probably finding the mail, PWA, that we can get that off there. Two of the, um, Evapco projects will be coming off there soon as well. Um, we just got to do a, a couple of little things. Um, the agenda has changed a little bit as far as where the site plans are, like Allen Dale parking lots is down, Evapco Third, um, amended is down construction. So, um, I only have one more space to add another, um, securely, um, took my last spot before we're going to be a two-page agenda. So, or I'm going to go, the font's this small, you're going to need help reading.
I don't know about the rest of the members of the planning commission, but it wouldn't hurt my feelings to see this go to a two-page agenda now, so that I can read the thing.
Well, with the Tawney Supply, we have to do a new concept plan there, right? Past, uh, past the date, right?
What was that?
Concept plan.
It's over, it's overdue.
For Tawney Supply, it was, uh, May of 2013.
Yeah, I was looking at some of those dates earlier today, and, you know, we're, we're well past a year on...
Yeah, concepts is the one we're worried about.
Yeah.
For a year.
Yeah, for, yeah, I didn't see, there's no dates for preliminary, or duration for the preliminary plan.
Pretty much not, so when, when you sit down with 100, excuse me, plus lots with Carroll County for the, for the, uh, submittal, you're spending thousands of, um, per, uh, unit, so you're not going to walk away from that real easy. I mean, because that, that money's not going back to you. So once they've committed to that point, you know, and, you know, and that's when we require the, uh, escrow fees and site development, um, review fees and that type of thing, which is a lot smaller with the county, but it's normally for real at that point, because there's investors behind it.
Did Pat Cox, Pat Smalls' project drop?
He hadn't done anything with it.
The one by his shop?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that was, um, that was, that was a site plan waiver.
Right. So, but he, I mean, did he drop it because he hasn't done anything?
Did he drop the plans or is he planning on continuing it? What's happening?
Oh, oh, I, I, I don't, I don't know.
Because that's kind of like, whatever happens, it looks like a standstill. Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know if he was waiting on something from you, uh, permit or something or...
A lot of his waiting from him, uh, is, I think he changed builder again, maybe? I, I don't, I honestly don't know.
Yeah. Just one other thing real quick, just, you know, was, we were talking about the...
What do you mean, quick?
I'll be as quick as I can, just want to suggest something. You know, and, and this is something that will come up as we do our comprehensive plan discussion, but in the area where we're talking about the general business on this Hoffman property, uh, I think I've raised this with you once before, but I think something we've got to be thinking about, um, is mixed-use development in, in some of that commercial, um, area, you know, where you've got a, maybe a three-story building with condos on the second and third floor and retail on the first floor. Um, because that, that can work towards affordable housing in that it, you are reducing the, the cost of the footprint of, of that kind of, of the, of the, the upper-level housing. Um, and it's just something, I don't think it's allowed under our code currently, and it's something we ought to be thinking about doing. And that's the end of that, the end of my comment there.
But there's thoughts, there's the things we need to bring up and keep, keep on our list.
Okay. I'm glad I brought it up then.
Anyone from the floor would like to come forward, make comments? Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you for coming.
No one has anything else? Looks like we're looking at October 28th. Looking good for everyone? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Who made that?
Me.
Oh, Chris made a motion for adjourn, second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you, guys. A lot of good discussion.